You know, that's funny.
The school closed.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday, November 14th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I do. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands on nation, on your behalf, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and to our community. Clerk Bout, can you please take the role?
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Ekay?
Here.
Commissioner Ronan is absent. Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
And Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, this time we have a proclamation. Whereas, the crime of violence against women and girls continues to be the most pervasive human rights violation due to the physical, emotional, verbal, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse that does not know any nation, any national or cultural barriers, and affects millions of women and girls of all races and socioeconomic backgrounds in peacetime and conflict. And whereas, the crime of violence against women and girls violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity, which results in serious short-term and long-term physical, sexual, and reproductive and mental health problems. And whereas, the World Health Organization estimates that one in three, 35% of women worldwide, experience violence. And whereas, according to UNICEF, around one in 10 girls under the age of 20 worldwide have experienced sexual assault, and more than 650 million women alive today were married as children, with more than 12 million girls married before the age of 18 each year. And whereas, according to the Global Report on Trafficking in Persons by the United Nations' Office on Drugs and Crime, the most common form of human trafficking, 79%, is sexual exploitation. And whereas, Zonta International, a global organization with more than 28,000 members in 62 countries, is working to make gender equality a worldwide reality for women and girls, and has contributed to help achieve a world free of violence against women and girls for more than 100 years. And whereas, the United Nations has established November 25th, 2022, as the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women. And whereas, the Zonta Club of Mount Pleasant, along with all Zonta Clubs, are encouraging all residents to prevent gender-based violence by saying no to violence against women. And therefore, I, Amy Perschbacher, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, on behalf of the City Commission and the citizens of Mount Pleasant, do hereby recognize and proclaim November 25th, 2022, as Elimination of Violence Against Women Day in Mount Pleasant, and further support all efforts to end violence against women and girls in our community. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand in the great seal of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, on this 14th day of November, 2022. Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as is.
I move. Second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. At this time, we are opening the floor to public input. If you, on agenda items, if you wish to speak at this time on anything that is on the agenda, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If there is anyone joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. Once you are entered into the meeting, you will be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak?
There are no raised hands.
I guess there's nobody on Zoom at all.
There are no raised hands?
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Not seeing anyone, and I'm unsure about Zoom.
I'm here. There is one.
Nope, she's there. Doesn't look like anybody else is on. All right, at this time, I'm going to close the public comment. Manager Dissents, can you please do the receipt of petitions and communications?
Yes. Received petitions and communications this evening includes monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received, minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board September, minutes of the Zoning Board of Appeals July, minutes of the Downtown Development Authority May and September, minutes of the Planning Commission October.
All right. Can you please review the consent items? Is there any consent items that we would like removed at this time? No? Manager Dissents?
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held October 24th, 2022. Consider contract with Adams and Associates for appraisals not to exceed $30,000 for required third-party appraisals for cases related to appeals before the Michigan Tax Tribunal. Consider award of contract for 2022-2023 downtown snow removal to green scene landscaping. Consider setting a public hearing for November 28, 2022, for development district license for China Master. Consider resolution approving the submittal of an application for the 2022 Transportation Alternatives Program grant for $400,000 for a portion of the Mid-Michigan GKB Pathway North Connection Project. Consider Michigan Department of Transportation resolution authorizing the approval of a contract for the reimbursement of funds for M-20 reconstruction project. Consider recommendation for 911 governing board appointments. Consider contract with Tokyo Marine HCC for 2023 stop-loss insurance coverage for an estimated premium of $273,813, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I move accept the consent calendar as written.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second and a consent and a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, at this time, we are going to open the floor to the public hearings. Public hearing on the Special Assessment District 3-22 roll and consider approval of the resolution, number five, to approve the roll and set the payment terms for Special Assessment District number 3-22. Manager Dissents, can you please review this?
Absolutely. The city received a petition from property owners to reconstruct the alley between Fancher and Kinney Street, which connects Lincoln and Chippewa Streets. A map of the area has been included in your city commission packet. Per the city policy, the homeowners will pay for a special assessment for 70% of the reconstruction, and the city's capital improvement millage will pay the remainder. The city's engineers estimate the project to cost $79,497.59. The homeowner portion subject to special assessment is estimated to be $55,648.32, with the remaining $23,849.28 to be paid by the city. The city commission is asked to hold a public hearing on the proposed improvements. Following the public hearing, the city commission is asked to adopt the attached resolution to levy the special assessment as proposed.
All right. This time, I'm going to open up the floor to anyone who wishes to speak on this in the public hearing. If you would wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, just in case somebody else has come in at this time, we're going to ask that you use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this time?
There's no one on Zoom.
Not sure if we have anyone on Zoom. Looks like it's the same.
If I may, we do have, staff is working out some technical difficulties with the Zoom. If we might be able to give it just a moment to see if maybe we have anyone.
Okay.
Can y'all hear me?
It looks like we do have one hand raised. Okay.
Lee, I'm not for sure they can, it doesn't.
So, Lee, are you there?
Yes, I am. I just wanted to clarify, I do attend these meetings every, every time I attend via Zoom. So, I didn't know if that, that was getting through or not, but.
We moved Lee into the meeting, but I'm not sure if she is able to respond.
I mean, I'm unmuted.
There she is.
Yeah, sorry.
We cannot hear you.
Lee, I can hear you. I'm on Zoom also. They're working on it. Can you hear me, Lee?
I can.
Okay, but I don't.
Still don't hear you, Lee.
People in the meeting can't hear us. So, our IT people are working on that.
All right, cool. Just hold the gnome here, so. And that's how, this is how I usually attend these meetings unless there's something vital.
I'm not sure.
And you're the SGA person?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Usually when I'm in a Zoom meeting and this happens, I just make every my log off and come back.
I mean, I can do that. I probably will. I'll be right back.
Yeah, we just don't seem to be able to get any, any sound. Best minds working on it. Yes. It's not going to work. Okay. Unfortunately, we're not able to get any sound from the Zoom meeting. Which is unfortunate. Is there anyone else, anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time?
Can we ask Lee if she wants to chat? Like, can she type a chat message?
Yeah, Lee, are you able to do a chat message to us?
Yes. No. Yes.
Okay, for Lee to be able to do a chat message, I believe she has to be entered into the other meeting, otherwise participants or attendees do not have access to chat.
Marian, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, but I can't, they can't hear us, but you can hear that on YouTube also?
Yeah, I can hear you and Leah, is it Leah? Talking over, I'm sorry.
All right, Lee, we have you in the participant?
It's so weird. I can hear you both on my phone and on the TV.
Are you able to send us a chat?
Oh, yeah, there we go. I can hear us on TV.
Let me check and see if I. It does not look like I am able to send chats. But you know what? That's okay. I just like, you know, I'm just kind of announcing my presence, kind of like a ghost.
I've sent a message to the city manager, so as soon as he looks at his phone, he'll see that you just wanted to acknowledge that you're here from the SGA and didn't really want to.
Just, yeah, like for future reference, I usually attend.
I don't see the ability to do that either. Nope, not able to. Yeah. All right. Well, at this time, we're going to, hopefully, maybe, Lee, if you have access to the email, you can always email in your, your comments, and then we can read them later in the meeting. Yes?
If I can, Mayor, we, the participants on Zoom are able to hear one another, and so I was able to confirm with staff that is on Zoom that no one on Zoom has any comments related to the public hearing, so we're all set there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, well, then, at this time, since no one has come forward, we're going to close the public hearing, and I will ask the commission if there are any questions that are clarifications that they need prior to a motion for staff. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I move.
Okay, we have a motion to, is it to consider the approval of Resolution 5? Okay.
Second.
And we have a second? All right. All right. Okay, we will take a roll call for this.
Commissioner Ronan is absent. Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ekay?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we will move on to our second public hearing on the proposed 2023 annual operating budget. As before, if you have any, the public would like to come forward and speak on this issue, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address. You'll be given five minutes. I'm not even going to bother asking Zoom at this time, because it doesn't seem, if you have anything that you would like to state, you can always email in, and we can read it later, or we can read it later in the meeting. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak on the operating budget? Is there anybody in the, out in the audience that has read the entire operating budget? Good job. Good job. All right. Yes. You can step to the podium? Yep. I need you to state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Brandon Horn, and my address is 4300 Collegiate Way, Apartment 924, if that even matters, Villable Grace. I just wanted to introduce myself to everyone here. I'm going to be covering the city commission for CM Life from here on out, so I just wanted to take the opportunity to do that and say I look forward to covering you guys and seeing what goes on in the inner workings of city government and everything, so it's a really cool opportunity.
Thank you, Brandon. All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come forward and speak on the budget? This time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any clarifications or questions that the commission has for staff prior to the motion? Are we, we are not motioning at this time. That's right. If you come across anything that you wish to speak or you wish to address, please make sure that you email Manager Dissents, any questions? Otherwise, at this time, we will be presenting the budget again for a vote in December?
November 28th.
November 28th. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to new business. Consider resolution to dissolve the local development finance authority, the authority, LDFA. Manager Dissents?
So, the local development finance authority, the LDFA, was created in 2000 as an overlay for the University Park Tifford District. The plan for the LDFA is set to expire in 2025. Funds have been used to support marketing activities with Mid-Michigan Development Corporation and Central Michigan University Research Corporation. They primarily use these funds to market the space that's down there. The district has not captured any taxes since 2020. The current plan for the district is to spend down the remaining fund balance by providing revenue to MMDC and CMURC. Staff took a look at this and realized that rather than just continuing to expense this year after year, which does generate reporting requirements for the state accounting and everything like that, the city is able to essentially dissolve the LDFA and to take the remaining fund balances that would go to MMDC and CMURC and just distribute the funds straight away. And so, that's the recommendation this evening, is that the city commission adopt the proposed resolution to dissolve the LDFA.
Okay. Are there any questions for clarity before we move to a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right, then we will move to a vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Consider the final amended budget for the local development finance authority. Manager Dissents?
So, to enact the dissolution of LDFA, the city commission will need to approve the final amended budget for the LDFA. The budget amendment will allocate the remaining funds held by the LDFA to MMDC and CMURC.
All right, are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, we will consider adoption of the pilot policy and authorize staff to solicit proposals for affordable housing projects in 2023. Manager Dissents, can you please explain?
I'm going to turn this over to Community Services and Economic Development Director, Bill Merdeza. He's going to highlight the revised pilot policy and answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Backbeat for you once again. At our last meeting, or the, yeah, the meeting two weeks ago, three weeks ago, we, we talked about a draft pilot policy document, which was a compilation of information gleaned from comments that we've heard over the last several months, as well as staff data gathering and reporting over the last couple of years on the issue of housing and various data surrounding the City of Mount Pleasant's housing situation, both in terms of rental units, owner-occupied units, missing middle housing, affordable housing, et cetera. So, I don't, I don't want to go over all of that. We've, we've had those discussions, and this is one piece. As we talked about before, the commission had discussed housing in three broad terms that we've been trying to address this year in preparation for the 2023 fiscal year, and those include addressing, the potentially addressing affordable housing through the vehicle of a pilot payment and a lieu of taxes as a tool to help encourage that type of investment in the community. We talked about looking at ways of trying to encourage more owner-occupied or homeowner-occupied housing in the city, and we're in the process of working on a proposed NEZ or Neighborhood Enterprise Zone prospect for you to consider, and the last, which we'll come back to at a later date, which is to look at ways of potentially incenting some conversion of rental licenses to owner-occupied housing, if that still makes sense for you. But tonight, we're going to talk, or at least you're going to consider, the pilot policy that's in front of you. In 2001, the city commission went on record to essentially eliminate pilots as a tool available to the city to incent or encourage projects that would have pilots as a necessary component of a project that primarily deals with lower income or affordable or workforce housing. As, as we've discussed, there has been, up to this point, some interest on the part of the city commission to reconsider that, that previous ban on using pilots, and to see if there's a way that we might reinvigorate a pilot as a tool, in the toolbox, if you will, for potential projects moving forward. And I guess I just wanted to also highlight that a pilot, the use of a pilot is really, ultimately, regardless of the provisions in a policy, is ultimately up to the city commission as to whether or not you're interested in a project that might make use of that, and also the terms and provisions of a potential contract for the use of a pilot for a project. So, as we discussed, and I won't bore you with the details of the policy document itself, which is in your packet, but we did make some changes from the draft that we presented a couple of weeks ago. We added a category for points to the matrix at the end that allowed for more points for a higher percentage of affordable units or projects that reach a lower. or projects that reach a lower percentage of the AMI than the minimum state housing authority requirement. So if it goes beyond what the state requires for addressing affordable housing, they get a couple of more points or another point. And, you know, we're only talking between one and three points available, so we're not talking about a huge number. But each point could mean the difference between a successfully negotiated project or one that doesn't make it to your list. We also eliminated one of the comments under the objectives where we thought it was really not supportable in terms of, I think we said stabilize the tax base. We just thought that that was kind of superfluous and probably not needed in that statement of purpose, if you will. We, in the document before you, we also defined, or more defined, what we anticipated as affordable housing, what that was. And there's a footnote, I believe, in the first paragraph that better defines what that is. And we added a mandatory pre-submital conference where any proposal that comes before the, would come before the commission for consideration would first need to meet with the staff so that we have a better understanding of what they're proposing and whether that might meet the desires of the community and the, and the City Commission. I'll also note, as we've talked about before, that should you adopt a revised pilot policy that would allow pilots as a tool, that we would be proposing to look at the, in the first quarter of next year to do an RFP, a Request for Proposals for Potential Affordable Housing Projects. And we would consider or suggest selecting one, if we had more than one applicant, selecting one project that we felt best met your desires as well as met the requirements of the policy and then move forward with that, bringing that through the process and then to the City Commission for your final approval, if that's a direction that you wanted to head. After assuming that we did get a project that was viable and met your, your goals, we would evaluate that after the end of the year to see if that's something that we want to continue to offer beyond the first year and one project. And if so, if there were some changes needed to the way we approach that so that we were responsive to our experience and then what we hear, not only from the public but from the City Commission and the developers themselves in terms of what works, what doesn't, is it a viable tool that we can use? Or is there some things that make it unusable from their perspective in order to be competitive at the state level? So with that, that's essentially a really quick and broad overview of the policy before you for consideration. I also, or we also have Anessa Heist in the audience with us. And Anessa is the Mount Pleasant Housing Authority Director. I'm gonna raise your hand, ma'am. And if there's any more technical questions, if you will, that perhaps Anessa can help answer those from her expertise and experience with the Housing Commission and affordable housing in general. And the last thing I'll mention before I just kind of be quiet and entertain any questions or comments from the commission is that there were several questions that came up in the interim around this, looking for some additional information. And I believe that Manager Dissents had provided an overview of the, the information that I was able to gather by calling around a number of the, the developments that provide affordable housing in the community to see if there was indeed a demand or a need or waiting lists, et cetera. And the results that I had, and again, also consulting with Anessa, was I didn't hear anybody say that they have excess capacity, that there really isn't a great need for this type of housing, that pretty much, in fact, one individual said, please, we, we need to have more affordable housing in the community. Now, that's from their perspective, but it was consistent across the board from what I heard. So just wanted to interject that, so.
Thank you, I appreciate all the work that the staff has put into and answering all of our questions. I know a lot of them probably came from me. I, I really appreciate a lot of data.
Yeah, you're welcome. And, you know, anything more that we can do, we'll most certainly do. And I'll just stay up here if that's okay, in case there's some questions.
That would be great. Are there any questions? Commissioner Bush?
I have two quick questions. One is, I just wanted to know who was on the team that set together the scoring matrix? Like who was involved in those, that?
Yeah, we, we borrowed the, the matrix from City of Traverse City to start with.
Oh, okay.
Just to, so we didn't have to invent the wheel.
Sure, sure.
We made some tweaks to that. We involved our planning consultant McKenna, who's been working with us until our staff planner was on board. And we also involved a review from city manager, from the city clerk, from our finance director, and again, Manuela and myself, basically, to, to analyze whether or not that was appropriate, if we wanted to make some changes, et cetera. And ultimately, as noted in the policy document or the proposed policy document in front of you, that that matrix, and again, it's open to, you know, to changes if you wanted to see something else. But that matrix would be used not only by staff to look at potential applications that come in, but also hopefully by the City Commission. If we had more than one and you were interested in moving forward with one of those, that you would apply that matrix to those multiple applications so that they would be applicable to, to meet the needs that you feel are necessary.
Great, I, I think it looks good at cursory glance. I just wanted to kind of know how it was created. And then the other quick question is, it would be on the next page when there's the list of the currently existing properties. I'm just curious, this Horizon West that's kind of hanging out down at the bottom there, is that one, I, did that one just not get included? Or is it something that's under construction? Or I, I've never, I'm not, it sounds vaguely familiar, but?
Unfortunately, I don't think that Mary Ann can speak with us this evening.
Right, right.
But this list came from, from her, so.
Oh, okay.
I don't know this, all the projects in intimate detail and?
Horizon West is the facility owned by a listener.
Oh, okay. It just doesn't have any properties listed next to it. So I was curious what it might be. I think it might have just been a typo or something.
Set the one down on Bradley.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate that. And we just went through that approval process for that one most recently, I believe, a year or so ago.
Any other questions? Commissioner Asman?
Am I missing it? Does it tell anywhere the, like the occupancy that's? Are there any vacant in these, in this list?
In this list?
Yeah. Or is this just what's available?
Yeah, this list is what is currently on the books in terms of previous projects. And then I believe that in Manager's Dissents Friday email, if I'm not mistaken, he had identified the callouts that I had done. And I contacted most of the folks on this list. There were a few I wasn't able to, to get in touch with. But there was a summary in that. I can go over that if you'd like, but?
Nope, I forgot about it.
Yep, I believe that, that for the most part, there were a couple units in some of the developments that were available, but they weren't necessarily always available. You know, think, people move out, people move in, that type of thing. And, you know, out of a number of units, and in one case, I think they had about 130 units in their particular development. They had like two vacancies that were coming up that they were looking at filling. But there were a couple of instances like that, but for the most part, folks had waiting lists. In fact, in one of the examples that I called to, their waiting list was anywhere between six months and 10 years, based on their income levels. Because the 10-year one, the folks on the 10-year waiting list had a super low monthly payment and they, nobody wanted to give it up. So they were on there like forever. So it was hard to get in on that one.
Any other questions? Looks like you're, you can step back from the podium.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so we are, this is presented to us to consider adoption of this pilot policy. I will entertain a motion at this time.
I would move we accept the change in policy to consider pilot programs for the city.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no?
No.
We will move on to 21, which is to receive the revised assessed role, assessment role and consider amended resolution number five for special assessment number two dash 22. Manager Dissents?
All right, thank you. So you likely recall earlier this year, the City Commission had approved a special assessment role for the reconstruction of the alley between Broadway and Michigan. And that goes from university to 115 and a half feet east of Franklin in the downtown. The total project cost came in at $40,327,000 higher than the original estimate that was provided to those property owners. So at this point, the City Commission has two options. The city charter does allow for the City Commission to review a special assessment if it came in higher than what we told the property owners that it was, and we can take one of two courses of action. First course of action is we could take the approved, sorry, the overage could be, sorry, on the wrong note, my apologies. So we can distribute the total overage to the property owners based on the initial calculation method used to determine the special assessment, essentially taking the overage and applying the amount of the special assessment to those property owners. This would require another public hearing and an amended special assessment role, and that would have to be conducted at the November 28th meeting. The other course of action that the City Commission has is that the overage could be covered by the Capital Improvement Fund. A resolution has been supplied and that could be done this evening by adoption of the resolution as well as a budget amendment.
Any discussion, any questions? Commissioner Bush?
I don't think it's very often that estimates, you know, come in, that end up being lower. And it sounds like, you know, we've already discussed with constituents that there'd be a certain cost to something. So my feeling would be that, you know, let's not ruffle any feathers and, and move forward if there is money in the budget to, to move. And the staff feel, and the commission feels comfortable with that. That would be my inclination. I don't like to go back on my word and say, never mind.
Okay. Any other comments? Vice Mayor Asma, or Alsager, sorry.
I agree with Commissioner Bush that it would be a good move on our part to absorb that cost.
Any other comments? Commissioner Asman?
Just reason for the overage, did they state?
Give me one second here, I think?
Probably material.
Yeah, a lot of material, a lot of labor. I know there were some issues on it as well, too. So let me just go ahead and pull that one up. You know, I don't have the details on it. I just recall a number of issues. I can certainly get back to the City Commission on that, on the cause for the overages. I'm just, okay, perfect, yeah. I do want to actually add, Jason Moore, our Public Works Director is here, so he might recall.
Can you step up to the microphone, please?
I believe it was mostly just the increase in costs this year based on materials and labor costs. But we can look into and see if there was anything specific. But I, I know that we were within our contingency, I believe. So I think we're, it was mostly that, just the higher bids.
Yeah, now that Director Moore is mentioning it, that is my recollection as well, too. If I recall, we had estimated this project fairly early in the year. And as we all know, inflation continued to ramp up as the year went by. So by the time that project actually got out to bid, we were doing so in a significantly higher inflationary environment. So I, yeah, that's, that's exactly why.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything self-inflicted that caused an error that, for an overage or something?
No.
No.
Okay.
Commissioner Ekke?
I think City Manager Dissents has addressed my, my question, actually both of them. I wanted to know how early the initial estimate was provided. This war happening and that war is affecting everything. Ukraine is small, but what people don't realize is that the impact of that war is global. You know, the economy and it's not just simply that it's happening on the other side of the world from us. It's affecting everything from your grains to fish and materials. And that's what we're getting here. So I do think that the right thing for us to do is to just go ahead and absorb this. I asked last time what would happen if the actual cost came in higher than what we had estimated, and here it is. It is, you know, the responsible and ethical thing to do because going back on our words was, that's not good neighborly. You know, we want to build a relationship with, you know, our community, with people, you know, with our businesses. And we have said that we are going to do this. They are contributing, and, you know, it is our city. Why not? Let's just go ahead and absorb the, the difference and move on.
Okay. Are there any other, any more discussion, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion? Yes?
I move we adopt option B, move to approve resolution 5B with the budget amendment from the Capital Improvement Fund of $13,870.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed, no? All right. We're gonna move on to number 22 under new business. Consider agreement on restrictive covenants associated with city property. Manager Dissents?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm actually going to turn this over to City Attorney Mike Homier to discuss the issue.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Pete.
As the City Commission may recall, the commission previously agreed to the restrictive covenants and institutional controls by MRP Properties. This related to the cleanup of the Roosevelt Refinery and mitigation efforts on the environmental contamination. At that time, the City Commission directed us to get a surety bond from them as well for, at that time, they were offering what is called a financial assurance by MRP Properties. So if you think of it this way, MRP Properties is obligated first. MRP Properties is wholly owned subsidiary of Valero. So MRP Properties would be the first obligor of that cleanup cost. And here we're talking about incremental costs related to the city's property. So where the contamination is located, the city has some utility infrastructure there. And so during the course of the useful life of that utility infrastructure, it may be that the city needs to go in and repair or replace that infrastructure. If it were to do that and encounter contamination, there are special processes then that have to be used to take care of that contamination, the removal of soil, bringing in new soil, taking soil to an approved site where it can be mitigated as well. So what MRP Properties has done is they've agreed to pay up to $900,000 in those costs. Those costs go up over time, so they're adjusted by the rate of inflation over time. So for the next 40 years, MRP Properties will be responsible for those incremental costs, those costs related to contamination, if the city were to encounter those in the next 40 years. At that time, MRP Properties was, they were offering a financial assurance that they would pay that amount over that period of time. So the City Commission directed us to get a surety bond for that period of time over 40 years. And we've negotiated this heavily with Valero, but Valero finally came back and said, we're not gonna, we're not gonna give you a surety bond, but what we will do is we'll give you a parent guarantee, that is, a guarantee from Valero directly for that payment should MRP Properties default on their obligation to pay. So Valero is a Fortune 500 company, they have lots of assets. I can't guarantee that they wouldn't file bankruptcy in that period of time, but it is the best, I think, that we're going to negotiate at this time, short of a surety bond, which frankly is, would be just sort of a insurance instrument held by some third party. Well, this is sort of like that, but not. I mean, that, for example, that surety bond would only be as good as an insurance company would be to pay it as well. So the parent guarantee really effectuates the same purpose, and that is to guarantee that payment will be there if MRP Properties does not pay again over this forty-year period.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Ake?
Okay, so now I'm worried. We just saw what happened with, you know, the, the previous piece that we just dealt with, all right? So costs go up, businesses falter. So is there a possibility that we could ask them to put some of this in an escrow for us?
So we investigated that early on in this process. So what they would do is if, and I can't remember the number off the top of my head because the city commission at that time sort of rejected that because it was so heavily discounted over time, it wouldn't approach even the nine hundred thousand dollars to place an escrow at this point. Plus, you'd have the administrative burden of administering that for the next forty years. So we did discuss it, but it was discounted so heavily over that period of time because of time value of money that it didn't seem like a prudent approach at that time. And that was under prior city manager Nancy Ridley as well. Like I said, we've been going back and forth for a long time on this issue. These are part of their closeout responsibilities with Eagle and the state of Michigan.
My only concern is that if in the future the amount becomes exorbitant, then what?
Well, that's why, that's why it's subject to the inflation as well. So presumably, right, we have, let's just say, eight and a half percent inflation, that amount is going to increase by that inflation amount, so it should keep track with inflation. That's why we tied it to a CPI number.
So the only thing we worry about is whether or not the company survives for the next forty years?
Correct.
And this is only if we, we encounter contamination when we are doing something.
Correct, and, you know, I don't pretend to be an environmental engineer, but they have stated repeatedly that they don't believe that we're going to encounter that contamination because it's, I believe, below where our utilities are currently at.
Yeah.
But there's no guarantee. I mean, you know, the environment is changing, the landscape is changing.
But that's why we have, that's why we have this assurance.
So it's, it's.
There's nothing that's going to say whether or not this is going to happen, that there may or may not be an incidence that we're going to have to do some cleanup of contaminated soil. This gives us an assurance that if this does happen and we encounter this, say we move our utilities or we do something, we redo the road or whatever, we have that, we have that level of funding that can come to us to help clean, to take care of this.
Yeah, this number, this nine hundred thousand dollar number was developed by the city, and so they pushed back on that number, they thought it was way too much, but ultimately they agreed on that number as well. They don't think that the cost would even remotely be close to that number. Now, again, I can't guarantee that either, but the, but the, I suppose the alternative is you don't give them the restricted covenants, you don't give them the institutional highway controls, and you fight about it in forty years if you should encounter that contamination. In other words, you'd have to pursue them.
For forty years, that's a long time. We'll be in the wilderness.
Sounds like the best alternative to what we were originally asking for.
Yeah, I guess, you know, if the city commission is prepared to, to move on this, what I would say is that you approve a contingent upon our final review and approval. There are some tweaks to it, so, for example, jurisdiction they have as the state of Texas, we're not gonna agree to jurisdiction in Texas.
Okay.
So there are some tweaks here and there, nothing substantial, the framework of it would stay the same.
So if we were to motion, it would be to motion, to approve this with contingent on?
Contingent upon our final review and approval, and then direct the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city.
Okay.
Okay, that counts.
So we're motioning to approve something that's gonna be changed?
Yeah, so for instance, they have a provision in the guarantee that says it's subject to the laws of the state of Texas. We're not gonna agree to Texas jurisdiction, right? So we're gonna change that to Michigan. Plus, there are some, there are a few tweaks in the restrictive covenants themselves that we will change, but the main provisions of the restrictive covenants, the institutional controls, and the parent guarantee will remain unchanged. That is, they're going to agree to pay nine hundred thousand dollars in incremental costs. I should also say, too, because I didn't mention this, that during this process, we negotiated them paying all of the city's legal fees up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, that's good. So I'm going to assume that if we, if we approve this contingent upon review by our legal team and the city manager, it's not coming back to us, or is it going to?
It would not have to come back.
Okay, that's.
Unless, unless you want it to come back after those revisions, I can do that, too, either way. I just don't think that the framework of that restrictive covenants and the money at issue are not going to be revised. It's like technical revisions to both of those.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with it if my case.
All right, I'm, okay.
Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion?
So I will move that we approve this as stated, contingent on the, upon review by our legal team and city manager DeSantis, and that we move the jurisdiction to Michigan.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes. Yes.
All those opposed, no? All right, we move now to the announcements of city-related issues and new business. This is where the commission has the ability to state something that they know that is happening in the area that they'd like to announce, or ask for information or direction of the staff. Does anybody on the city commission have anything they'd like to announce? Commissioner Bush?
Just a reminder, probably preaching to the choir, but this week is the beginning of the second week of city leaf collection, so this week will be a city-wide sweep on leaves, on leaves, and the next and final leaf collection will be to, begin two weeks from tonight, that week, the week of the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, so it'll be right after Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Yes, yes, and I've been told, I think Doug told me it was supposed to snow, yes.
Yeah.
Made me happy as I walked in. Commissioner Ake?
It is November, it is Native American history month, and it is important that we acknowledge the contributions and the experiences of Native Americans or indigenous people in our community. We do have a land acknowledgement statement, and we cannot make a land acknowledgement statement that is not linked to our recognition of the contributions of indigenous people or Native Americans in our community and nationally.
Thank you. Anyone else have an announcement?
Events are happening at CMU, and they save a win.
Oh, yes, they are. Anyone else like to make an announcement? Is anyone in the staff would like to say anything at this time? No? All right, we will move to, we will open the floor for public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you're in the public and you would like to come up to the podium and speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please come forward, state your name and address, you'll be given five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, we will close the public comment. We do have a work session tonight, we're going to discuss parking management, and we are going to have some of the MML information that myself, the vice mayor, and Commissioner Ake received about a month ago, almost a month ago, at the MML convention. We're going to take a ten-minute break, and then we'll come back to a work session.
All right, we're gonna resume the meeting. This is the work session. We're gonna start with a discussion on parking management. Manager DeSens, can you give us an overview?
Absolutely. So I'm gonna end up turning this over to Assistant Fire Chief Doug Lobzinger in a minute here. Doug oversees the Neighborhood Resources Unit, who has traditionally been responsible for parking enforcement within the city. Doug's done some research on parking systems and he's gonna present, discuss these with the City Commission. I think this research is gonna help us define what our desired future state for parking will look like. Will it be a metered system? Will it be an enforcement ticket system similar to what we've done previously in the past? Or will it be something different? So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Doug.
Thank you, Manager DeSens, and good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Looking at parking options, I thought it was important to step back in history a little bit and talk about what we had, where we are today, and kind of how we got there. 2018, we were doing three-hour parking enforcement, 10-hour permit parking. We have 13 lots in the city, right around 800 parking slots in those, plus 100, 150 parking slots on the street that are parallel parking. And then in 2019, court ruling came out where it made it unconstitutional to chalk tires the way that we were doing. So we stopped doing that. Since that time, we really haven't been doing our three-hour code enforcement like we have for the parking. So that brought us to today's meeting where we're actually looking at some different options that we have for you to consider this evening. Number one, we can allow free parking pretty much like it as is right now. And that's really no change. There's no cost to us. Another option is to go with a pay-to-park management-type system, which is similar to electronic chalking devices. There's a multitude of different companies out there that use license plate recognition to do metered parking enforcement. And they set kiosk stations up, pay stations up, even electric meters that pay credit cards, coin, and dollar bills. There's a lot of those, and I found that the companies were drastically different and provided a huge variety of services. So before we spent too much time researching that, we wanted to get a little bit of direction from you. Our third option is that we could go back to putting coin-operated meters in like we had in the past before we took them out. Not really sure which direction you guys are looking at. I know one of the key points to parking management is deciding whether or not you're going to have free parking or you're going to charge for parking. And these pay-to-park management systems have come with a wide variety of expenses and costs and ongoing monthly fees, and there's a variety of different ways. But again, it's really hard to look at three companies and then say, okay, this is apples, this is oranges. So, but if you were to entertain a change in code enforcement and you wanted us to do some type of enforcement, I would probably lean more towards the pay-to-park type system. And we would probably lean towards Pango because that's what's already in our community. CMU uses Pango right now. And it's known in the community. A lot of our patrons use that system.
I'm wondering, have you talked to any of the business owners downtown?
Not at this time, yeah. We wanted to get some direction from you. But we do feel that once we get some direction, we will have to talk to some stakeholders, you know, and not just our business community in the downtown business district. But we need to look at how this will, or how this could impact the billing department with the city. There's a lot of intricate pieces to this. It's not just, we're gonna do enforcement of parking again.
Since 2019, has it become a huge issue with free parking?
It depends on who you talk to.
Well, I know when I'm down there, I don't have a, I mean, sometimes you gotta drive around a little bit, or may, you might have to walk a couple blocks. But, but I'm more inclined to say, if it's not an issue, people, I mean, it's not like we have droves of people going to downtown, right? And so I'm just so inclined to, to not spend a bunch of money, put up meters that I would, I would think as a, as a citizen, I don't want. And, and maybe business owners will think differently because, but, but again, when I go down there, it's not like I can't find a parking spot somewhere. And so if it's not a huge issue, I'm inclined to say, let's not spend, you know, $20, $30,000 initial cost to then make people unhappy, right? I mean, that's, unless the business owners say, hey, listen, we can't, we don't, people are parking here too long. And I know it is an issue with some of the, some of the apartments that are upstairs. Obviously, they're, they're parking there overnight because they live there.
Well, but I think they need overnight passes for certain areas, yeah.
For certain lots, overnight parking are allowed with passes.
Well, I mean, even on, even on, like, like Main, you know, the, in Broadway, some, those apartments up there, some people, you know, park overnight.
Yeah, they can. They're supposed to move between four and six.
Sure.
But it's an ongoing problem.
Yeah.
The thing with parking is it depends on who you ask, whether it's a problem. This can be the greatest system in the world, and then somebody will have a problem with it. So we're, you're never gonna make everybody happy. So it's just a matter of a direction that you wanna give us so that we can spend more time researching in it to make sure we're making the right decision.
What are the cons of the free parking, I guess?
Pardon?
What are the negatives of the free parking? In your
Well, the
time that you spend
The main thoroughfare, Broadway, Main Street, those parallel parking areas are, are the most coveted parking slots. Usually, the other lots aren't as full. And those are coveted, and sometimes you have a problem finding those. Depending on who you talk to, they'll tell you that, well, I wanna park out here so I don't have to walk as far. Well, understandable, and plus it's a free, it's a free slot.
Yeah.
But sometimes the patrons don't have access to them because they're full, too. And sometimes they're full from business employees or tenants in the apartments. That's probably a big one. Yes, ma'am.
So I feel like if I had my way, and I know I'm just my own, I'm the only person, I'm just being for myself. It seems like, yes, those parking spaces are the most valuable. And maybe if those were set up on a pay parking, but they would maybe have a 30-minute, like, free parking. Because I think a lot of time what people get frustrated about is those situations when, like, all they have to do is take their coins to the bank, or all they have to do is they wanna pick up a smoothie at Pure Vitality, and they don't wanna park two, three blocks away to walk in for five minutes and pick up a smoothie and then leave. And so if we had like a, if, and I see this in a lot of cities where, like, the first 15 minutes, the first 30 minutes are free, and then you pay beyond that. I mean, obviously, I know it's more complicated than that, but I feel like that would solve a little bit of an issue.
But the complication with that, though, is somebody has got to monitor that every so often. Who's going to do that?
Well, I'm talking about with, at the kiosks, then we would have, it would be getting a kiosk.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, just simply, I think those coveted parking places, you know, I agree with you, maybe 15 or 30 minutes. And hopefully, but then the problem is how you're gonna monitor that unless you have a camera there that records, you know, every movement around them.
If you were to go with some type of electronic pay-to-park, you could set up whatever rules, management systems that you wanted.
Okay.
Such as, let's say, you don't live in Mount Pleasant, and the enforcement goes around and finds out that you're in violation. It would give you a notice maybe the first time if you wanted to set it up that way. So that it educated you about the parking enforcement or the parking management system in the city of Mount Pleasant versus writing them a ticket. They gotta, or let's say they are a citizen, maybe the first time's a warning. Let's say you have special events that are big days. Maybe that you increase the parking fee for the day. I mean, there's a wide variety of things that can be done with them. It's just a matter of
What's your opinion? Should we pay for parking or should we?
Let's just
I'm not sure if I'm the best person to answer that, and I'll, now, we, I've read some books on the parking, and the businesses are supposed to do better when there's a pay-for-parking service. And they can keep their patron parking for their patrons, manage it a little bit better. But parking's a beast, and there's a lot of variables in it, and there's a lot of opinions on it.
And even to look at, even to say just Broadway and, and Main, I think, a big investment like that, I don't think you're, I don't think it's gonna be worth just having, you know, whatever that is, 60, 70 parking spots that are bringing revenue for a few hours, you know. I, I, and I understand, listen, I don't wanna walk any further than I have to. But I also know it hasn't been that, that big of an issue to say, let's invest so much money into this.
If it's working for, for the, the business owners, and they're happy with it, the commission's happy with it, that, we're just here to collect some information and get a direction from you as to what you think is the best. And I'm trying to just bring a few options and give a snapshot of view of it. And when, when I first started looking at all these different ones, it was very overwhelming because they, they do a thousand different things each one.
But I thought it was some of the business owners who were complaining about parking or that their clients don't find parking spaces, which, you know, led us into looking at how to manage parking. We're not talking about parking in the whole city. So perhaps we can have areas where parking is restricted. You have to pay, you know, to park in those areas. And then in other areas, it's free. You just have to use your feet, you know, or, you know, or at least do something, figure out how to, you know, move yourself, you know, to get, you know, to get from those locations to where you're going. For me, you know, my priority would be to make sure that if we are going to have some kind of parking, free or not, that we have, we make sure that there is parking for people who have mobility challenges very close to those businesses. Because the, they are the ones who then suffer if they have to park, you know, several blocks away to try to get themselves to the businesses. So that would be a priority for me. And then after that, the rest of us can line up, you know.
I had a question about the lots that we maintain for downtown employees and how that fits into the picture.
We're talking about the lots here at City Hall, is that?
Or isn't there another one?
Where you have to buy a tag.
Yeah.
Okay. In particular, um,
Like, like behind Gray's, I think is that for city staff, and then there's another one behind the dentist office.
Typically, city staff will park here.
Or not city staff, downtown staff.
Gotcha, okay.
Do they pay monthly? Do they pay yearly to, you know, to park in those places?
For one of those tags that's $75 a year.
Okay, yeah, for the overnight tags, yeah, so that's
Now, for overnight, for parking during the week.
Okay.
Nine to five kind of thing.
Okay, so those are restricted areas then. They, now consider them restricted areas. Well, what about people coming, somebody coming from Midland, you know, to come shop here? And, I mean, my initial understanding of the situation is that people were complaining that they couldn't find places to park near the businesses downtown. And that even, you know, some of the businesses were also, you know, complaining, although some of the businesses were taking up the parking space. So we need to do something about that if, if, if it is important to us. A lot of cities do have parking where people pay. Go to East Lansing. You know, you pay to park. Go to Lansing. You can't park anywhere, you know, any of the Michigan Avenue without paying. You pay for it, so.
Completely different, though.
But Commissioner Ake, we, we had the opposite experience in Muskegon where we could park anywhere at no cost.
There were places with, you know, that, with, with cost, but we chose particular spaces. You know, so I go back to what I said earlier. Is it possible to have particular spaces where, you know, parking is restricted? You know you have to pay if you're gonna pay in, you know, if you're gonna park in those spaces, or you don't have to pay. In other areas, depending on who is there, you're gonna have to pay to park in those spaces. And they'll be clearly marked. People would know, you know, so.
So I wonder, too, if part of the, were there, because I know business owners were complaining, but my understanding was the business was, were complaining when the city streets were shut down with the, with the patios and things, not in a normal situation outside of that. So I know businesses were frustrated with that because that's when literally there were no parking spaces.
No, I, that's not, that wasn't what I heard. I heard people were complaining that one of the reasons they don't go to downtown is because they can't find parking spaces.
And that was, and I think that that, that's pre-COVID.
Yeah.
I find that usually there are parking spaces a block to two blocks away. But that
How many blocks?
coveted spots can be tough at times. Now, who's parking there?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, you also have to say, how many, you know, how many blocks is the downtown actually? From a parking, from a parking lot, how many blocks would you actually have to walk to get to the center of downtown? Maybe, maybe two, yeah.
One, two, three, yeah.
Probably one and a half to two would be most of them.
Yeah.
What, what kind of enforcement responsibilities would there be if we would have meters in prime spots?
The pay-to-park or coin meters?
Yeah, Pango.
Say, say coin meters or Pango, whichever.
We could set that up. We're gonna have to come up with some way to do some We could set that up. We're gonna have to come up with some way to do some type of marking. You can't mark a vehicle like.
No.
So you're gonna have to do it with photographs.
Yeah, do a scanner.
You know, you can do it with a license, an LPR license plate reader. Has a way to identify and electronically chalk the car is what it says, what they, what they refer to that as.
Yeah, it's time.
That's done with pictures. And done with their license plate. And then they'll drive by again and they scan it. But again, they have to be able to see the rear license plate.
Yeah.
That's another aspect of it.
And, and would that be a halftime job?
It all depends on the level of enforcement that you would want on that.
Okay.
MSU does that, sorry.
I think it's important to mention that when, if you wanna start at the basic level of coin operated, you know, you put the coin in, you twist it. Those require maintenance. They get jammed, they require to be emptied. There, uh, you know, then you gotta, you know, carry the change, you know, town it, cat. As, I think as, I mean, as a country, I think we're past that point. Um, I would, I, I mean, as good as it, the fact is, is that they require a lot of maintenance. Um, aesthetically, they're not pleasing. Um, and we have actually, uh, removed, I think, all of them.
All of them in the.
Yeah, we, we, so, we, I think we'd be going backwards. I mean, this is your work session. But I think, I think it's worth discussing what we're trying to achieve here. And, and it is a very fine line between downtown business owners wanting turnover in parking to increase revenue at their business in us having a parking problem of people parking not uniformly or according to the ordinance. We have left wheel to curb, we have people double parked. And I think what Commissioner Chapman, right? I, I think that when he asks those types of questions, we have to start with, if the idea, if our philosophy is to aid businesses in vehicle turnover so that, um, they have, um, uh, parking spots available. I don't know if we're, I don't know if that's the best reason to do parking. It would be like the court telling us go out and write speeding tickets to generate revenue for us. Well, y- y- you don't do that. So typically, we enforce to what? Change of behavior. That's, that's why we take enforcement action. Um, I just want it to be very clear that when I drive through downtown and, and I see, I don't see cars sideways and, and, and parked left wheel. I mean, periodically and we take enforcement action. But if the idea is to move those cars out, that, that's a different philosophy. And, and now you're talking, um, if we're gonna do this, then we better be very efficient at doing it. And the most efficient way is electronic parking, i.e. what's already in place. Um, because the last thing you want is double apps. You don't want one person to go to uh, Pango and then the next person go to Loria Parking App. Uh, you, you know, you intermix that. Um, and I also think it's worth mentioning, CMU does not, cannot help us with this. So, um, it's, it's all what we're trying to achieve. And, um, yeah, that's, that's where I'll end with.
And I think looking at other cities, that's what they're doing. They're saying, we need to get people out of here. We're working to get people downtown, right? I mean, that's, and so to, to say, I, I, we don't have that problem like you say, I lived in Lansing. We don't have that problem. Uh, we, we're trying to get people down there to go to the businesses. And I understand if part of that, once they start going, it could become an issue. Um, but I just don't think it's, I don't think the kind of investment it's gonna take is gonna solve the problem we have. I think it's gonna solve a problem. We're gonna not be paying for parking, but I just don't think it's gonna, it's gonna solve the problem that we have.
Yes.
Just playing devil's advocate here, cause I know this is an unenforceable proposition, but what would risks or legalities be of simply maybe making two parking spaces on each prime block? Like a fifteen minute loading zone. I mean, it is a little bit on the honor system, but nobody parks in that parking space at Mountain Town and nobody parks in that parking space at Buffalo Wild Wings. Um, I mean, there's a loading zone in front of Norm's Flower Pedal that's there. I'm not sure what that loading zone's for, like, uh, but just a, just a fifteen minute parking, and yeah, would be, it would be on the honor system, but maybe, you know, like two parking spaces a block for people who do just have a fifteen minute business. Cause like, um, Commissioner Chapman says, I'm kinda confused about who is parking downtown. Because like you said, we are having trouble getting people into the downtown. So who is it that's parking in all these parking spaces? Because I'm, I'm up with those, I'm of the opinion of, yeah, it's hard to find a parking space downtown. I live downtown and obviously I don't really drive downtown very often, but if I do have to stop there, I'm like, I, I'm like, I'm just gonna walk from my house. Because it's, you know, I'll, I'll drive around that back lot behind, um, behind Isabella Bay and like, get lucky if I find one spot, you know, so. Anyway, I'm just talking about those quick turnover spots, just maybe two on each block so that people aren't parking there all day.
I, I don't think we were looking for a, a necessary solution to it all tonight.
Right.
We were more or less throwing, uh, we're kinda throwing this out here, seeing what is there a certain direction you want us to look at going?
I would say we'd have, I'd wanna look at a, opinions of business owners again before I would make any decisions. I, I'm inclined to think that we need some sort of, um, like pay system if it's for all parking spaces or some. But ultimately, you know, it's, it's, it's not my business is downtown. I think it would be a benefit for businesses downtown, but I'm not a business owner downtown.
I think most parking studies show that it is a benefit for the businesses to have that.
I, I, I still think, I, I, I still think that we need to manage parking downtown. I don't live downtown. I mean, I walk, I will walk eventually from my house, you know, where it is to downtown because I get tired of, especially if I have to go to Motorless Motion. Generally, that's where I go because I'm taking my bike in there. And even when I take my bike there, I don't have place there. I'll go park at the church off, what is it, Washington? Carry my bike over and walk my bike over. Now, that doesn't make sense. But there are, you know, the, the spaces are occupied. So if what I'm hearing, and I've heard from colleagues, I've heard from other people, I've heard from people who have businesses there who say, you know, their clients can't find parking. And you're, you're correct, who is taking up the parking space? So perhaps the one way to resolve that is to make sure that those parking spaces are available for people when they come. Make everybody pay for it. You know, you park and you pay. And if you know you're gonna pay, you know, ten dollars for staying there for, you know, for ten hours or three hours, too bad, right? You know, so, yeah. I, I think there's something that needs to be done to address this concern. I mean, I'm not worried about walking two miles, you know, to get here. I have parked at a county court, you know, parking space and walked back because there is no space there. Not even in that parking lot at the roundabout. Okay, so something is happening. You know, where parking spaces are not available, not at least easily available. And that's because some of the cars are there all day and they won't, you know, you know, people who come to be, do business can't get into the businesses they, you know, they, they want to, you know, visit because some cars are there from eight AM or six AM to six PM. So you know what? Um, if the way to make it, I suppose, let's say equitable, in other words, whether you have a business or you don't have a business or you're visiting, is to make everybody pay for parking, I am for it. And so we have to just simply think of the way to do that. CMU is using two, two systems. One is the Pango one and the other one is the scanning, you know, so we have to decide, I think we should go to electronic, some form of electronic parking. I'm sympathetic, but I'm being also, you know, um, realistic, so.
I agree with your point. However, um, I just don't think the cost outweighs the benefit.
But if this is, it's, you know, so the cost is what, a one-time cost? You are assuming that the city may not, that there wouldn't be people coming here, you know, over the summer or year in, year out. Okay, so one-time cost to set it up seventy, seventy-two hundred, what was it?
Seventy-two hundred annually.
That's an annual cost.
So the annual cost is seventy-two hundred.
So you gotta make seventy-two hundred dollars for you.
And then you gotta pay to enforce it, right?
You have to have an employee, right?
Yep, y- you're, you're not gonna have a parking management system that pays for itself.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it's a cost that just doesn't, it's a sound.
That, that's, that's a difficult proposition.
I have one other question about downtown, um, business owners. Are they required to get a permit in a lot?
No.
If they park in a lot that's required a permit, they would.
We don't have to have one to, to work downtown.
But if they're parking in front, but if they're parking in front of their businesses and occupying space, I am, you know, listen, I'm not, I'm, I hope that I'm not imagining hearing things. And I'm not imagining seeing certain, I'm not kidding, seeing certain, I walked from this building over there for two weeks, not every day, but two different times. Cause I wanted to see, when we're talking about this parking issue at some point, I just wanted to see what's going on. There are a couple of trucks that are there. You go by, they're there. You come back three hours later, that truck is still there. So I'm just hoping that, you know, I'm not imagining certain things or that I'm not hearing certain things that, you know, some of the business owners are not taking up the spaces that they expect their customers to, to, to use. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I am just simply saying, people are complaining. Are they imagining this? So how do we then do that? You know, maybe the issue is, if you're gonna park in front of these businesses, you ought to pay for it somehow. And then the rest of it is free, so we can all go back there and park free and walk.
I think even parking, like, I, I'm, I frequent downtown. I, I, I love the soda shop. And so the times that I'm going down there evidently is the time that everybody's going down there. So even if we're paying for parking, I mean, there's not enough parking spaces for everybody that wants to go have lunch at Max and Emily's, right? And so between the business, the employees, eh, even if we, I mean, we pay twenty, twenty, thirty thousand dollars, it's gonna be the same issue because the people that are going down, I, I understand the issue of people parking all day long. But the biggest problem is the people parking during those rush hours, I mean, between, between eleven and one and, and then for dinner again. And so they're, they're still gonna be full with, I mean, they're not, they're not gonna stay for three or four hours for dinner. They're gonna stay for the time that everybody wants to go down for dinner. And so that's what happens. I, I go downtown a lot for, I, 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 I enjoy our downtown. So I, 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 again, I agree that people shouldn't be parking there all day long, but I just don't, again, I don't think that's the issue we're looking at. I think the issue is, there's just not a parking to begin with. And then the times that people need to park are the times that they're full. Um, I, I know people are down there, but I just, I just don't think it's worth the cost to, to people at, at seventy-two hundred dollars a year, plus then paying so much to put them in.
It, in the moving target here, you know, we don't know what's going to happen when the jail moves. Um,
That's true too.
And, and so that, that is a, a, that, you know, that's inevitable. And it's a, it's a moving target. Um, I don't have any analytics or data that says, you know, um, county employees are parking, I, I think that they're parking where they should. But people visiting, um, their, uh, loved ones in jail, uh, you know, or whatnot. They need a place to park in their, y- you know, that, we don't know what impact that's going to have. Um, on the flip side of the coin, maybe it'll be, we'll need more parking because we don't know what they're gonna do with that facility either. Um, so I think there's a lot of options on the table, but that is a moving target. That, that depending upon where we pivot, um, we may be pivoting again in two years or three years, whatever the completion date is, so.
Okay, given what Director Loria just said, you know, I'm gonna ask, so I know that we need to a- address the parking issue. So if in terms of long-term urgency or emergencies and short-term emergency, is this a long-term emergency or is it a short-term emergency for us right now?
That's what I think. I think, I think you're right, Director. I think, um, I think to, to say it's okay if we don't do it now, but in the future, I mean, my desire is to see downtown grow and do well, right? And so there may come a time where we say, now this is a really big issue. I just don't think the issue we're trying to solve is what we're looking at today. I think, I think it could be though, in the future, to say, as our community flourishes like we hope it to do, as our downtown is developed and people are coming down, we may wanna then say, let's, we need to get people in and out of here as quick as possible because there's so much going on. There's just not so much going on right now. And as we look to the future, you know, I think to say in two or three years, if, it's like, now this is really a problem where, and then you can say that I was wrong today? And I'd be ve- very happy to say, I'm glad that our downtown is flourishing. Um, but I think it's okay to say, it's not for now, but it could be for later.
I agree. Seems a little cart before the horse to me.
I think it's good information to talk about and to, to continue to educate ourselves, um, cause whatever the parking problem is, when we fix it, there's gonna be another parking problem. No matter which way we go with that, so.
Commissioner Bush?
Just for clarification, I mean, I, I personally would be interested in trying a, you know, a small program of electronic paid parking, but it sounds like it's like all or nothing. It's still gonna be the cost. Um, but the option F two here, that's just a, it's a ten thousand dollar initial it cost and then just revenue split fifty-fifty afterwards. So there's no cost afterwards with that program or?
No, there, there is, there's a yearly software cost. And it comes out to about that seventy-two hundred dollars.
Oh, so the seventy-two hundred dollars is in addition to that revenue sharing?
Correct.
Okay.
The only thing, if we go with the revenue sharing, if you go to buy a kiosk station and you wanna get it installed, that's about ten thousand dollars a piece.
Okay, so.
To do that.
So with option?
And they would install it free. But then they share the revenue fifty-fifty with you for parking charges and for the ticket charges. And the, a service fee for doing the ticket charges. So it's basically gonna, the way I took it, talking to the sales rep that I dealt with, this is basically gonna be about a sixty, forty, seventy, thirty.
Not us, right?
Not leaning our way.
Yeah, not leaning our way, right?
Not leaning our, correct, correct, and.
Just wanted to note that.
And the majority, a majority of the expense is gonna be in enforcement.
Yes.
Who, who's enforcing it, who's paying for the?
Who gets that lovely job?
Yeah.
Oh, what is the Passport?
What?
G, G.
Pardon?
What is the Passport?
Passport is another company like Pango. It was one that I use as an example. There are about six of them that I really started researching. Uh, Passport, uh, Motel Park. Um, there, there's a bunch of them that are out there and they all do a variety of different things. And they solve a lot of huge parking issues in bigger cities, I think. But, you know, we have parking problems, but I'm not sure that's the answer to our. But there's so much to it, you could take a lot of time investing into research. But there's so much to it, you could take a lot of time investing into researching it. Because you can do merchant clubs and you can, there's all sorts of different things you can do to make incentives for people to have parking, but somebody's gotta pay for that merchant's club too. So that impacts the business owners again, so there's just a.
And I think too, if we, if we then install these systems and then in the summer shut down the roads, now those aren't bringing in any revenue. And so, I mean, I think there's a lot.
But we're not shutting down the entire road in the summer. We're only shutting down a particular.
The parking spots.
Yeah, we're taking parking spots.
We're not doing the whole thing. So there's still parking, there's still, I mean, are we just simply going to focus?
Like whole Broadway.
Are we focusing primarily on Broadway, you know, that whole central area? Or are we going to look beyond that area? I mean, that's the other thing. So if it is, you know, if it is just that small area, can we use, can a handheld tablet or camera, you know, address that? CMU does the parking lots. I think I mentioned this last time, that, you know, I, you don't have to use your decal anymore. You just simply use your driver's, you know, it's your license plates, you know, and, you know, a car goes through there and they scan it. And they say to you, make sure that there is no car parked behind you because they wanna be able to scan, you know, scan your plates, you know. So, you know, with educational, some kind of awareness, people will come to know that they can't back into the parking lot so that you don't see their, you know, license plate. So that's a possibility, you don't have to install.
We have lots of options. I think it's really important that we put some information out there and let you guys digest that. And that we look, have some stakeholders give us some input.
I think that'd be a great idea.
This isn't a discussion that needs to continue to go on.
Yeah.
And so, and who knows where it'll.
I think talking to the business owners downtown and asking them what they feel would be the best way to handle it. Because they're the ones that are, um, that have brought this forward many, many times.
Mm-hmm. I agree. They are also stakeholders here, so.
Yep. Okay. So it sounds like, um, you're gonna be visiting some sandwich shops downtown?
I do frequently, yes.
Okay. Yeah, to ask them some questions, yeah.
Different topic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, now we're gonna move on to the MML, um, annual convention and what we learned. Um, I'm gonna go, and to tell you the truth, I put this on the agenda and then remembered it at four o'clock today. It's just been a long couple of weeks.
We can move it till next time.
Do you wanna move it till next time?
Yeah, I forgot to do my PowerPoint.
It's almost nine o'clock.
Okay, well, that's true.
I would agree.
Okay.
I mean, I have my information, I can go.
I mean, go ahead, this one will be quick.
No, no, no. I have the PowerPoint in present, you know.
It is up to you guys if you wanna do.
Well, we wouldn't wanna, we wouldn't wanna make you guys go too quickly through it.
If we do it now, I don't wanna do it again next to, you know, in two weeks. So we can either do it now or not do it now. I mean, I, I would be ready.
I would personally rather wait, but that's just my opinion.
I'm, I'm okay waiting.
Yeah?
I can wait.
You can wait? Okay. Mary is probably the only one that put together her.
Good job, Mary. Good job. What's yours? Yours, yours, teacher.
I, I have mine here, I just did your PowerPoint, what are you talking about?
Good job.
So, um, we will postpone this until the next meeting?
Hi.
All right? Or beyond.
I stand corrected.
I do appreciate whenever we do to these, go to these conventions, anytime we go someplace as a city commission, um, learning information and bringing it back to the city, I think is extremely vital. Um, so we will put this on the agenda, um, the next work session. And I will motion, uh, or I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned at eight fifty-two.